Call this meeting to order.
Roger, which is the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone has an agenda. Need to make any changes for the rest of the agenda?
Under our business, I just want to talk a little bit about Jimmy Stone and the handbook. This discussion, see what happens.
Agenda amended. Second. I have motion profit second to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Next is consent agenda. We will work on vouchers and payrolls and then go through that. You might need that on. We're gonna let Roger give it. He wants to get, just give an update. We've got, we've got a big hole working on vouchers. We'll get you on your way. Yeah, you have the floor. We should be signing and listening.
Alright, well, I appreciate you working me into your schedule and I thought it was, there was a few things happening with RER and there's a few things that were supposed to have already happened but haven't happened. So I, I wanted to just come give you a quick update on where we're at. Some of you I know were at our October 9th.
Put that recording, RER is rare elements. Yes. Yeah, put the recording that way.
Rare elements, sorry.
Okay.
And some of you were at our October 9th open house and I thought we talked about the fact that, you know, we're gonna get our permits, we would have our permits by no later than October 3rd because that was the, that was the self-opposed date that the government put on themselves to have it completed, which they didn't. So probably nobody, nobody's surprised. But finally, on the 16th of November, I brought this to remember what all these offices are. The Department of Energy, DOE, Air Department or their Office of Energy Efficiency and Regime of Energy, finally finished their NIFA review, which is exactly a review that the NRC, that NISL Regular Authority Commission does. And they finally finished that and that was approved. The next step, which was the release of the money for the project from the federal government was supposed to be coincide with that. And that still happened now. We have people back there, you know, talking to them every day and, and they said last week, we'll, we'll have it, you'll get it, you'll get the signed document last week. We, yesterday they said, well, probably today. So we still don't have it. So we're waiting, ready to jump on and, and get going with the project. And you know, I think we discussed, we moved the thousand tons to up to the stages that are ready to process in that demonstration plant. We issued a purchase order to the, to the general contractor and they're, they're just like the rest of us. They're there, they're waiting. And that's long row. Our Thomas Drake from General Atomics is gonna be, is gonna be the construction manager for us, which is, you know, General Atomics is one of the major partners. So we also, in addition to having all of that ready to go, we're just, we're sitting there, ready to go, waiting to go. We've got equipment in states, ready to bring in, which we can't bring it to the site until we get that signed document. So that's where we're at. We expect, the construction crew was there from the beginning of the week, ready to go. So we're, we're ready to pull the trigger. We're ready to get going. Just waiting on the, on the fence.
I'm gonna show it to you, Korean Brian.
I understand how that goes. But I thought, and I appreciate the time that you gave me just to come give you a quick update on where we're at. We're not, we're not, problem's not up, I guess I would say. We are, we're anxiously awaiting the opportunity to get it going. As we, we discussed, and I think some of you know, we've got a lot of our equipment for the plant. The, we've cut down the given amount of time it's gonna take, not gonna take a year for construction. We're down to seven left timeframe because we put a lot of it on frames already and it's modularized. So it's gonna be a lot easier to get that plant assembly and go. So that's, that's where we're at. There's maybe some other press releases today. They haven't happened yet. So I just checked and talked to Brent last night. We're, so early this morning, we might actually, I might actually be able to tell you. We told the trade that we're gone. So that's where we're at. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to do it. Answer them for you.
Hey Roger, that Chuck County road where you guys are gonna be turning in, is there gonna be a whole lot of truck traffic calling stuff in or? Curious. Sometimes I get beat out up there along that road, up above there.
No, there, it's, it's probably not as much as you say. There'll be some truck traffic.
You don't think it's terrible?
Because it's modularized now, it adds, that actually cuts down on the number of loads, you know.
Yeah.
But yeah, there will, there will be some truck traffic today. You know, I don't consider it to be heavy.
Okay.
Well certainly watts, what we do with the, with the roads and that sort of thing. We'll monitor that.
That truck that goes by the old airport, sometimes that gravel beats into that bit like, that really gets bad.
But if you have any concerns, then be sure and let us know. And I'll be down there checking if we start bringing things in, so.
You have any questions?
It's just a hurry up and wait kind of.
Yeah. We're not, we're not that good at waiting anymore.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks for the debate.
Well, I certainly appreciate the time and that, and I will be back periodically to let you know what's going on. And I'll be doing what more notice ahead of time.
Yeah, just get with Becky. She likes that.
I will do that.
Thursday before meetings, kind of deadline, so.
Sounds good. Alright, we appreciate it. Good to see y'all. Thank you for your time. And like I say, if you have any concerns or questions, give me a call.
Next is consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion profit second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Public comment? Any public comment this morning?
Uh, just a quick thing. We do have a new, uh,
Please state your name.
Maintenance manager. David Klein, thank you. We do have new maintenance managers here. That's where we're sitting right now.
Uh, Dave, can you make sure you reach out to all the applications that were sent in and let them know?
Yep, we, we had two of them, so we have.
Any other public comment? Next up is planning board, Rick.
Good morning, gentlemen. There's two or three things that have come up. So it maybe sounds a little funny, but we've, now have a forum on the board, which is a good thing. The, had a lot of phone calls, typical for radio tower, you know, cell towers, that kind of thing. Big issue now, not issue that's coming up, it's the new airport up at Fort Horns. And that old subdivision up there, there's a major subdivision going in and we've had a lot of public comment, a lot of people coming down from the area. Some of it's kind of knee jerk reaction. They hear the word airport and of course, I'm out of here, sort of thing. So I've counseled a couple of people, just sit tight and see how it all works out before you sell what you really like, so. Anyway, the, another thing that's come up is the sphere of influence law. You may recall that the towns had a, way back when, Cody Jackson area. It all wound up about subdivisions and stuff, things going on outside the city limits. So they got the sphere of influence law passed years ago. Within a mile of the city, anywhere within a mile, city could overlay its ordinances and that sort of thing on top of that group of people that are in that sphere. And it eventually got thrown out. It basically was unconstitutional because the problem was, the people in that sphere couldn't vote. Wow, I got city government, but I still can't vote for, you know, the city council members and stuff like that. We were told that it was, and it was thrown out in the state legislature, I think, two years ago. Problem is, since that time has come up, that there's one of the district attorneys for the county, for the county, and I have not met the man. He says that the sphere of influence is still in effect for counties that are not zoned. That's a big deal. You know, we have no zoning in the county. Or am I suggesting that we have such a thing? But the fact remains then, are we still under the sphere of influence? Because we've been acting like we're not under the sphere of influence. I asked the council for the board, it's been a couple of years ago, as people have hinted at, that's when all the trials and the, all the crazy stuff started and it may not have gotten processed through there. So I'm kind of asking for a formal, legal opinion on whether we're still under the sphere of influence. I don't believe it's possible because that would mean still that the people that are under that sphere at that level still can't vote. So to me, it's basic constitutional right. If you can't vote for the government that's being used on you, then it should not be, state legislature either didn't do it right or the wording is funny, whatever. And that's one of the things. We have come up, of course, if you know anything about the P and Z rules, which ours are basically state statutes from years ago. There's, in the exemptions, one of the exemptions that you get to deal with is the railroad, okay? And it's in Exhibit A, H. And when you file an exemption and you do all your stuff, it's, the wording is, is backwards, it seems to me, and some other board members over the time. It says that you can get an exemption if, if it affects the railroad right away. Well, I want to know who on what planet can affect a railroad right away. I've dealt with the Rio Grande over the time I've been in government, Rio Grande, SP, UP, and I think IP a couple of times. But it's, you can affect it. It's like, it just doesn't happen. And I think the wording should be affected by railroad right away. Question is, how do you get it changed? To change these rules and regs, we have to go through a whole series of public hearings. Even to change a simple, a simple part of a phrase. But it really is, it's, it's how it's worded and it's just not right. Being affected by, affecting them. So anyway, it's something that our attorney can look into. But I, my experience has been, if you want to change these, it's all about public hearings and all that. We've been down that road before. It's not a pleasant situation. So. The other thing is, I'm here as, also as the vice chairman of the Sunset Ranch Water District. Muscle Road, if you guys know, up, up on the hill, the old poker palace, the whole thing. There's no second access point to that subdivision. And it has, we've had it blocked at least three times since I've been here. One was big water, one of the water haulers that, you know how they haul water from here, take it to Gillette and bottle it. Look on the bottle of water, you'll find out that water comes from our well. Well, power. The well at the bottom of the hill. He got crossways down there and tied the place up for five or six hours. If there was a medical emergency or anything like that, there's no way in or out. So it becomes a life safety issue. There is a solution and we need to get direction from you, the board, to see if we can solve it. Muscle Road catches the corner of the school section at the top. That school section goes directly north and hits Pippin on the north side. So you've got public, public, public all the way up. And the fence line of the corner, the line of that school, I think is right there. Right along that school section. So it's possible to, to just put an emergency access or whatever across there without having any private property to deal with, all public access. And we think that the school, the school sections can be used for public stuff and not tear it up. I mean, there's no intent except just an access road in and out for life safety issues. So, and that's really the summation of the thing. The airport situation, again, that one is, is, we have, we're having some problems with the surveyor and the whole presentation. And that's what Becky was showing me the map for, because developer said he's gonna eliminate one of the big lots and that hasn't happened and stuff like that. So, but that's kind of a big deal. We're trying to find out what the FAA is doing about it. So just be aware that that's, there is some controversy up there. That's, thank you. I appreciate your attention. Questions?
Like Crossman School or state land like that, that's, it seems like it's an easy pick sometimes, sometimes it's not. And landfill, new landfill, we had to deal with that. Before the state would give us an easement, we had to build a road to get an easement. It's, they, they, you talk about having things backwards. We had to build a road before the state would give us an easement. So it's, it may, it may look like a simple thing, but be prepared to roll up your sleeves and get into a fight maybe.
Okay, well, of course, the whole thing should be funny. I mean, there's, there's thirty-two homeowners up there and more. You know, that little, the other major subdivision went in there, already started to sell some of those lots. Beautiful land. It's amazing little place. So you're gonna end up, we could end up with forty-some home sites or homeowners. Sixty, seventy people, eighty. So if this costs, this, this little bit, honestly, it's gonna be the cost of even scratching a road across that school section to connect it. So looking for direction, we call, you know, what process should we go through to, with the school? Who's, who's in charge of those school sections? That's really.
Part of the problem, you'd have to go, start with the process of establishing a new county road at the county. And then it would have to, you know, go through the whole rigging, the whole public comment and all that. And then the state would have to be involved as a landowner in that, quote unquote, landowner in that situation. Similar to what we've dealt with with that chunk of barn road. And I, I think there's opportunity to do it. You're, I'm just looking on the map here. You're talking about three quarter mile into that road. The only other issue, of course, would be the prison there. But I, I think that's the process you have to follow is, first start with that, which Michael has that, and you go out and you get signatures from interested parties and. That'd be the appropriate way.
Yeah, yeah, it's not a problem for us to get a petition going. That's already got the basic form, so.
Well, that subdivision was done. There wasn't many houses. It's growing. Now a second access is getting to be.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, it's a beautiful place. It's close into town. We have city water, so I mean, that's all plus it's worth for what we're doing.
Well, and the other thing is, is not only for us on Sunset Ranch Water District, but say the people up there that live around me on account. Say something that happened with the prison or something, where they have to shut that road down to where those people couldn't even get out. Cause they've only got one road in and out of that, too. Pippin's only got one road in and out. So it would benefit both of us.
It'd benefit both sides there. So I mean, that's, when you're going to the state for that stuff, that's, those are the things they like. You know, benefits more than just one entity.
Sure.
Bev? And Bev, could you please state your name for the video? Thank you.
Question for you, Rick, on the airport.
Yes, sir.
How is, is that going to be structured as a, a private airport and is there going to be an FBO on site or?
No, there will be any, there will not be an FBO as far as we know. He said, no, and yes, it's a private airport. It'll be, the typical thing is that the runway will come in front of, behind the lots that are already signed. If you, Becky can show you the map, it's all, it's all plotted out. And it's fly in, fly out. I've seen places like this before. Everybody's got a hangar or not.
Is there going to be fuel available there?
I would imagine they're gonna, if you fly in and you need some gas, you're probably gonna have to contact somebody. And just contacting people at the airport and then run a truck up. I don't know. They haven't talked about that. I don't think there'll be any fuel storage though. That's, and they're, and also, they're in the preliminary plat phase right now. Then they've gotta go to final plat. And those are the questions we can continue to ask at final plat. Fuel storage being really a good question. So.
The reason why I ask is, we had to fire up there at Black Tail Deuce. Nautical Mile Spearfish was within a couple miles closer than Mondale Field for the fuel sales on that hunter. And beans that is located in the Black Hills and right on the edge right there, I can see that being of a demand at some point. Whether it's a firefighting issue or anything. So I didn't know if that was gonna be.
Yeah, I mean, it could be used for emergency purposes as well. So he did say that the aircraft, kinds of aircraft will be your standard small plane, pipers and that sort of thing. It's not paved. I'm not even sure if they're putting down the old World War II metal pieces for the runway or just keep it all gray, traveled or whatever. And those issues are really up to them as a developer. But there's, what, eighteen, eighteen or nineteen? Twenty-one, I think, total lots right now. If they pull that big west, that big western lot out of it, which is pretty rough, he said, that would be reduced.
And those lots are gonna be sold as private?
Yes. It falls under the major subdivision religion of the state law. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thanks, Rick.
You're welcome.
Keep us updated on how it's going.
I will. Thank you, gentlemen.
It's better than I thought it was gonna be when I was talking about the split.
Yeah. Well, when I talked to Alicia a couple of weeks ago, we were looking at maybe seven tops. But we're up to nine, potentially ten. We had a new kid move in that might be wrestling as well and joining the team now. You know, so a little bit behind the, behind the start. So that's gonna put us in a, in a problem when it comes to duels. You know, we're not gonna win a lot of duels because we don't have anybody over a hundred and sixty pounds. And so, you know, we're gonna give up forty points.
Right.
In every duel we meet. So obviously, it's gonna be tough to make that up. We do have some good returns.
Well, you get a couple of baddies off the couch and have them put the pop tarts down and.
Right?
You can give people a run for the money.
Yeah.
Probably gonna get in trouble for that one too, but you know.
Yeah, you might. You might.
Evvies, get out there and, and go wrestle.
Please state your name.
Alright, David Tisdale. Um, just wanted to come visit with you guys a little bit about the ground and the four seasons of the fairgrounds. And maybe offer some solutions and ideas and suggestions on what we can do to maybe fix that a little bit. And, and I know these guys are working on option or two too. I know, right now, you guys are working on what? Getting that ground screened? Yep. And from what I understand, that's supposed to be a quarter inch minus? Yeah, we're supposed to do that.
Yeah. Doug Brown has a screen. And he was gonna come in, he's often come in and, you'll trial for us. If it works, it works. If it doesn't, which, you know, it'd be strictly up to us whether we have the whole thing or not. He says we probably won't get all the little, the little stuff out.
And that's, you know, kind of been my experience with rocks. And you know, once you get rock, you know, it's almost impossible to get it out without taking the whole ground out. And, and I guess that would be what I come visit about today is between myself, there, that place I have at Dewey, the original ground that was in that barn came from that place at Dewey when these water was on the fairground. And then I know Fred and Claire Wilson have said that they would donate gold sand from the river down there to bring in. I guess that would be my suggestion is, is if some county equipment was available to remove the, the ground that's in that barn and, and just get rid of it. And I think it could be used right there on the fairgrounds. There's quite a few washouts and low spots and whatnot around over the years that that could be used to fill back in some stuff and, and then just put some, some new ground in. And I think, you know, my suggestion would be to, to start with the sand and, and put, and put all those sand in there and then start adding the stuff from my place until we get it like we want. We're suspecting like twenty to twenty-five loads to kind of redo that ground. What's on thirty-three loads? Thirty-three loads? I don't think it's six inches of. Okay. I didn't know for sure how long it was. I figured it was a hundred, like two twenty-five, but.
That's about right.
Okay.
I got, I figured two twenty-five, a hundred.
Okay. So, so yeah, somewhere right in that neighborhood. Okay, so, so, yeah, somewhere right in that neighborhood, you know, um. And, uh, I don't know, I think, I know Ty's lying here.
Yeah, my husband has donated, it's time to rent the equipment to take the dirt out, move it, bring it in, whatever, to run that equipment.
Can I get your name?
Lonnie Ferrell.
Thank you.
But that's kind of what we're thinking, you know, it's one of the nicest facilities in the State of Wyoming, it truly is. Um, I've been to almost every single fairgrounds in the State of Wyoming, and we've, we've got some of the nicest areas. And, and it just, you know, I think we ought to just do it right, take care of it. And, uh, really not that big of a deal, and just go in there and fix it. If, if that was an option, to use some county equipment, you know, and, and I realize hauling that stuff back from Cheyenne River down there by Mill Creek and even my place at Dewey. Yeah, we're looking at twenty-five miles to town or so, but I don't know, is there a chance that we can even backhaul it with hauling some gravel to the southern part of the county or something, and load those trucks in the back? You know, in that way, maybe it wouldn't affect road bridge hardly at all.
If that, you know, work with the fairboard, you know, they're, they're in charge of that. You stay in contact with the fairboard, see what they wanna do, how it works out, you know. If the screening doesn't work, you know, that's, that's an option after all.
Is there, um, I know you're gonna be working with the fairboard on this, can we put, can we put a plan into effect as far as, as testing on the screening? And if, and if that doesn't work, and this is the direction that we wanna go, that we can, we can roll right into that? On, on evacuation?
If it doesn't work, then we definitely have to look at it, does the plan, and that'd be replaced at the same. That, that's, that's where we're at right now, it's just, uh, and, and here again, anybody that wants to see if we do do the test, anybody that wants on it, just give us your name and number, we'll contact you when we do it. Just see how it actually does work, I don't know. Definitely doing the sift, the, the screening's gonna be the cheapest way to do it. It's probably gonna be, yeah, once we do it, it's probably gonna be quickness, but once we evacuate the dirt out of it. If we wait for the truck to go down with, with gravel coming back, that's definitely taking quite a bit of time to do that.
Well, what's county, how, how many trucks you guys have, five trucks?
Three, three or four trucks.
And how many trips can be made to like the Cheyenne River on day on, on eighty-five? Just right in front of the. So you get nine loads a day, so I'd say two days.
Okay.
Um, I think the ground could be replaced faster actually than they can sit.
I also don't know how long it'll take to sift it. He did say it will not take very long. And that's providing we can kind of give it into winter, so we have something to work with. But I have no idea what, what kind of timeframe we, once we start sifting.
When's the plan to see if the sifter works? I mean, is that always or when is it?
As it sits right now, I, I, I talked to him and, uh, he's got a piece he's gotta fix. And it's, you know, whatever he gets available to do it, there is no, it does not have a date.
So is it usable, why it's like that, or?
Most people's mind, the answer's no.
I don't know if I was allowed to talk down there. I'm here in support of, of it, um.
Can you state your name?
Oh, Cassie Hayman. Um, my, like, input and thought processes of it is, I think that the fairboard is doing what they can to, to fix the problem as, you know, as the best that they can, and it is the cheapest way. But I don't think in the long run, it's going to be the best option. Like, I, I truly do think if you can get some good sand and take it out and get it to where you don't have to keep fixing the problem. I think if the, the county is willing to work together to, you know, get this donated sand. I, I think that you guys are gonna have a lot happier community in the long run. I know that there is a family that has a child that's competing at the junior NFR. This, they leave on Thursday, and they haven't been able to practice. They're driving to Wright, Wyoming, two days a, a week to use that arena to practice before they leave for Las Vegas. And that's just a shame that, you know, we're in this predicament and, and nobody did it on purpose. And it's just kind of a, a bummer that we're here in this spot. But I think if we can get the best solution possible, whether it's, you know, I, I, I don't know what the funding, what's it, what it's gonna cost. But I think in the long run, you guys are gonna have a lot happier community just to get it completely fixed the right way. So it can start being used and utilized, um, cause there are a lot of families and a lot of people that use that, especially throughout the winter. You know, um, and then you guys can start getting people renting that and getting, you know, paid for it, too. So that's just my outlook on it.
My wife printed a green and Gillette on Sunday, this is not useful. And I mean, that's one reason I'm willing to donate the ground to her. I, I, it's that important, it was.
Do we have an idea and estimate a cost for the trucks to run that? What would it, what would it look like, do you have any idea? I'm sorry, I couldn't.
Do you have any, I guess we've asked, backhaul gravel in Southern Indian County, all dirt back? Was, as an option, we could, or?
Yeah, that's what I can say, I think we could someone should sit down with Jim, either with him. If it's valid, look at it and see if there's a chance we can do it and try to save some money on it. Just have to pop up trucks driving back for it. He'd be the guy that would have to go on the figure.
You know, I, I still think it'd be a pretty cheap solution, the problem. I, I, I really think it's almost as cheap to sift into dirt. I mean, I, I really do, when you figure that up, I mean, we're only talking a couple of days.
You know, and, and the fairboard would look, and they may be some, some trucking company that will pay their fuel. We're done, we're kind of.
I can sit guys and just go make their time period.
Or at least I offer a couple of their fuel if you want things.
You know, that's just like, me and I don't know how it's worked out, I'm only farm play, and so I'm not sure I can hold on to something like this. Even though it's no charge, I don't know, something I have to look into, if I can't, I'm gonna throw the truck, you know, belly down on the deal.
I would like to say put on the, the next meeting agenda as a follow-up. I mean, if we can get it tested before that to get an idea so that we're not looking at months out where people can't use the arena. I mean, to try to move the process along a little bit, if that's possible. Sit down with you and see for sure, solutions, or, I don't wanna kick it out down the road, we'll see.
You parking around the over?
No, I don't, yeah, I got back home, it's too slow, uh, the county, we don't.
Susie Overman, um, I tend to agree with the Tisdale family and Cassie as far as just cleaning the whole thing out and replacing the vehicle. I mean, they've tried their sifting, they've tried, I don't know how many times they've picked rock out of there, but I think that would just be a quicker, quicker fix. And a good fix to get rid of all that garbage that's in there now, so people can start utilizing this arena like it should be. And what they take out of there, they can use in that parking lot, cause it's always muddy and everywhere, you can, you can put it on the road, so.
And, and ground does wear out over time, I mean, ground does need replacement. Just real quick, I mean, I agree, we need to do as quick as possible, you know. If Jim could work up something, when he thinks something will be available, I'd like to have, have the, the crew come in. I cannot speak for the whole board, I'd like to have you guys come and, and present this to us, uh, the same, the same way you're doing it right now. The ground does wear out, our biggest complaint is, I mean, our complaint right now, you're hearing about the indoor arena. But in the summer, you're gonna hear about the outside, cause that dirt is wore out. You know, and I, I don't know, I don't know what we can do about that. You know, I guess, I don't know when we can do the test, but I don't, I'd love to have you guys come, come present this to the, our meeting is next Monday. Come present it to us and, and come in, we don't, you know, that's just where we're at. If Jim can jump right on it, you know, maybe this is an option. You know, for us right now, I don't, I don't know. Getting it out of there, I don't think's an issue, but I don't, when you talk about bringing it into the, into the, our biggest problem we have, like the low spots we have in the, in the facility right now, they're too low. They wash, it's just gonna wash the sand out unless you have something else to, to use the sand for. I mean, right now, we, we fight the water, uh, Jim's worked on several times for us, and, and we just wash our stuff right down into our, our drainage. Just where we put it, you know, maybe we can find something. My, I guess my take on this is, if it's X amount of dollars and they're the same, I would, I would be forward with all new dirt. You know, if there's the cost saving, cleaning it is substantially more, maybe leaning outward, but if it's a, if it's the same cost, I would think of replacing the dirt, you know.
Could, could you do a description on the, the material that we're talking about hauling from the river down from Dewey?
Yeah, um, the stuff down on the river is kind of blow sand, correct?
Yeah, it can either be that or river sand, whichever way you go.
Yeah, and then the stuff from my place, I, it's sand, um, has a touch, I, I hate to say clay because everybody's gonna, ah. But just a touch of clay and it's just enough to bind it a little bit. Um, you get into wash sand or, or river sand and it gets deep, it, it's gonna be hard on horses, too, you need.
We were thinking a combination of both.
Yeah, and, and, uh, that, you know, it's, it's kind of, what I have is kind of sandy loam, I guess, what you'd call it, something like that. Just a little bit of dirt, hard.
And there's plenty of the, the product that you're talking about, David, that is, and it's all quarter minus?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's all fine and the, the stuff that, that you're posting, yeah.
I agree with our chairman, but, but, you know, weighing it out, but I would caution that if we have to do it multiple times, it may end up costing more. Even though one or two times we do it, or however many times we may sift through that and, uh, may cost more than just replacing it and being done with it, too. So I would look at that.
Any rock will always cover the top.
Right, right. And, and I think, right, Dave's right, we need to go talk to them at the fairboard and, and come up with a plan ourselves. I guess, I wanted to come here and, and see what your guys' support was on using the county equipment, working through on the bridge to, to make something like this happen. You know, I'm not trying to go over your guys' head or anything like that, just trying to start it. Is the equipment available, is it an option?
Uh, you're saying quarter inch minus, now if you look at the, that granite, it looks like a lot of little rock on. A lot of that, you know, but big majority of that stuff you're seeing. Now, I'm not talking about the bigger stuff, but we, we, that came from the first time that we, we tried to sift through. So are we still gonna be seeing like what you see the little rock?
We, uh, if, if we take all the blow sand, no, it'll be.
Some weeds, maybe.
Yeah.
So, does this sit, you're, you're saying that to sift the blow sand, there's, we will have no issues with rocks?
Correct, yeah, and, and same with mine, there is not a rock in mine. There is a rock layer under it, and if you get too deep with the loader, you better pour that scoop over the hill and, and get a known, cause you'll have the same problem. But no, as long as you stay above the rock layer, there's, there's not a rock in it.
That's, that'd be my only concern about bringing new stuff in. Last two times we brought stuff in, there's, the time before, uh, my camera's speaking, wasn't.
Heck, I didn't invite you to come down and look at it. But, but, uh, to, to give you an idea of the stuff at my place, that's what was in the barn originally. Before all the gravel, sand, all that stuff moved out.
I got, I got a good feeling it's gonna be a lot better when we have one up for sure. But like, the stuff was all in this time, you were told, there's not a rock in it.
Well, from what I understand, that, and this is kind of one of my skepticism too, that that was screened, quarter inch minus. And it's not.
I think it's a bigger rock, it's still stuff, I mean, uh, Garrett helped us some of that. We did not get all the rock out the first time that we had to screw up on that. That, that red rock, it came off, it came off the scory roads out there. There was nothing wrong with the scan, sand, when they brought the first load in to sit, they just dropped the bucket down all this on the, on the road when they picked, cause they dumped it on the road, the scory roads out there. Then they picked it up, and that's where we ended up with all the red rock. Sifting the big red rock is not an issue, I mean, as far as getting it, that stuff you can sift down pretty easy. It's the, you know, there's some people are talking about the little quarter inch stuff being an issue. And I don't, I don't know, but, you know, bring it, let's figure out the fastest way to do it, maybe Jim can, can look into his schedule and kind of see what he thinks he better looking at to get trucks. I would sure like to think that if we was to do something like this, we don't get four or five loads and then we're waiting. You know, and I'm saying, I'm, I'm always busy and stuff like that, don't walk. Then there's gonna be a time when it's gonna be downed, we get it out.
Yeah, I was just gonna recommend, just what Dave said. Once Dave, once you guys get a plan, once you come back here and then, then we can figure, try to figure out something again, and see what the cost is gonna be, then we can do something.
And do you, with that process along with Jim, did you kind of maybe get an idea of what that cost could be prior to, or, or maybe we come visit with you, do?
So you're in there, twenty-seven.
He's going halfway to his house.
Get old, sound like a big plant?
Yeah.
Awesome. Get the third board next Monday night. The price you have, so I can just get that arena back up and using it.
So, great, appreciate your time, guys.
Yeah.
Fairback?
Thanks.
Fair. I just wanted to say, it's, it's pretty awesome to see our community come together, and we know it's an issue such as this. Less likely to lean towards who's at fault for the problem and things. And I've, I've gotten talked to a lot in the last couple of weeks on, on donation of time. Donation of product, different ideas on how to fix the problem. And, and this is, this is cool to see, because we're saving, you're saving the county and the taxpayers a lot of money. And whether or not other people notice that or even appreciate it, I sure do. And it's, it's awesome to see us come together as a, as a community for, I'd like to see this in, in all problems.
All right, thanks you guys.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate your time.
You, see ya.
You know, especially if it comes to cheaper than sifting. Speak up, Jim. Please.
Boy, notice it kind of started the legendary process for the pressure of the bridge. And I guess their recommendation was to go with completely new structure, twenty-six, go by deck. Just kind of on confirmation from the new guys here on board. I believe you guys have signed an agreement to agree to the project.
Yeah.
Does their kind of established little specs on it? We will be responsible for maintenance on it, the project itself is a hundred percent guaranteed.
If we, if that bridge gets replaced, how much is it gonna take to tie the road to it on each end?
Shouldn't be much of anything.
Not much?
Yes, but I mean, that'll be part of the structure.
Oh, that's part of their job.
And there is, there's another small wood structure, just three tenths of a mile south of that, that's in on this project.
Is that what I said, Garrett?
No.
That'd be, what that would do, that would open access up to Albert, for that night taking my mine down there. Let's board the pleasure. Continue moving forward with this White, with White hot, maybe sound like we need confirmation for onboard.
And again, which bridge?
The one that burnt two years ago. I mean, doesn't, doesn't access a, a lot of other land down there, but it's a big thing that would help open up that, uh, Albert mine that night. And then, uh, with the sheep provide road, build Chime River Road, and that was, that would be off the table, I'm worried about that.
And we're, that's a hundred percent on them and we're just maintenance.
I double checked, they say it is one hundred percent. And then I think if it does fail, I think we do have to come up with some kind of replacement plan, 'cause I think those part of stick relations at that road, it stays as about the road, that's what they're telling us.
Is there, uh, is there, uh, any plans or anything on the rebuild of that bridge? Can it burn again?
Not after they replace it, I think it'd be a steel structure. And that's it. The metal part of it was a steel structure. And then there was two wood spans on the chin, this wood span's on the front.
So they're talking, the steel starts just liberating the whole thing, everything will be okay.
That's what White hot would have to do.
Do you have, do you have any, like, great agreements, case of work?
I don't, I don't think I've ever seen that made.
Wonder if you could, before we do anything with it, and see if we can find something for it.
Yeah, 'cause I visited, I was a friend of mine yesterday, and I think he had a problem, because he was really coughing up a lot of smoke.
They've just emailed, if you can get an email to it. I guess, I'm only, just major concern at this moment, if, if we have to replace it.
Yeah, that's, it's probably a dead end road, it's kind of starting to sound like it's pretty much a disaster. There's no access to neither county, county, from my, we can fight until it's resolved.
Yeah, it's kind of dead end road, but if we do get a fire down in there, there is really no access, that's, that is pretty isolated island down in there. If we get a fire, it's gonna catch it when it gets to the highway.
Yeah, once you, I know there's.
Yeah. But even across that river, it's a problem coming from.
Well, I think you'd have to come.
Yeah, I can remember years ago, growing a wheel tree back there and coming in fires. So, it's not a, it's not a good place to get to. Will every rate weight restrictions that we have?
It'll be, you know, the White hot's favorite.
We have to stay on Albert to make sure they.
And I, well, I got specs from them, and then to me yesterday, and I forward them, so we can.
In your opinion, Jim, is it worth the maintenance responsibility to have them build it?
You would hope that the new structure, you wouldn't have much maintenance.
What direction we give to him?
I think they're privately sealed, I mean, until documents are signed, right, then you really don't see, uh, binding, bindings to it, correct?
And I haven't seen, I haven't seen the agreement.
I guess, I'm taking the board is who authorized him to tell White hot to move forward with it.
And they, you know, they did a letter indicating, yes, we'll get you guys that contract first, you know, this is a little address.
Sign a name, sign a, a letter needs signed?
That one, it's not.
Do we have it next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, what's your next meeting, yeah, what's your plan on that? Does that agenda for next meeting is to sign that letter then?
That works. We did shut the contract trucks down, which I never tried. We have pulled roughly twenty thousand ton of gravel down there. We do have sixty thousand left in that. That would do about around three miles. We're still building road down there, we've built about four miles so far.
Are you gonna get the contract, the contract trucks back, anything's up?
Well, I thought, you know, I'd see what we could do on our own during the winter, and, you know, if we have to in the spring, they won't break that down for the week.
Does that have to be done by the first of the year?
March thirty first.
Oh, March thirty first, okay, we're still good. We still got time.
Yeah, we do have some time, and I thought you'd give us.
I thought that you'd be done by the seventh.
It was originally, we, we're smart.
Oh, okay. You got it, Stan. Okay, good.
Other than that, we're still trying to let a few rules here and there.
Is that it for you?
That's it.
Anyone else, do you have any questions or comments for Jim? Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Uh, let's take a quick five minute rest and break.
Okay. No, I'm just gonna pause this for a minute.
Mr. Ice T drank too much.
I did.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Then we need to explain and apologize to the constituents for taking the time to waste their tax dollars. And two, um, figure out why is it that we don't want this handbook if it's gonna update us for the, for the next ten years? Like I said, I never wanted this to begin with. I asked our clerk at the time, um, hey, do we need this? And she said, no, the insurance company said we're good. Um, so I'm still baffled at why we're wasting, how many months have we wasted on this handbook?
Over a year.
A long time. And, and at this point, what, what, what are we trying to accomplish? And why did we go this far to begin with? So I'm confused, and just wanted some input from people upon it.
Well, none of us want it, none of the elected officials want it.
But I understand that.
He approached the board and said, it needs to be done, I will do it, and.
And the board approved it?
Right, because some got outvoted, but none of the elected officials want anything changed in it. Um, we've, at, we've, we've all said that several times to you guys, but we're not being listened to. And that will be evident when we meet next week in public, which we ask not to have done. But it's gonna be all hashed out in public in front of everybody. Aren't we in public right now? Well, I know, but we, I don't know why it's being done in public, but I mean, it's better than, I guess, next week.
Because the, the people need to know what we're paying twenty thousand dollars.
We all would like it to just be pushed under the rug and the twenty thousand be done away with, because none of us wanted any of it changed.
The frustration, for me, it didn't, and I, I, like I said, I voted against it. But the, the effort was put into it, the book was created, the time was spent on it. And we're kicking other things aside, like arenas and other things, that we could have probably used that money as, as for better. But at this point, it's not, yes, Jeannie approached us, but I'm not willing to blame Jeannie, even though I've had my frustrations with her too. That was passed upon her by the approval of the board. So if, as we go around individually and decide, hey, we don't want this, let's put every roadblock in front of it, it just wastes the board.
And I understand that you keep saying that roadblocks keep getting put in front of it, no. We keep telling her what our concerns are, she gives us a new book and our concerns aren't addressed in it, so.
And that's why we're supposed to be meeting as a group and hashing those things out.
Right, so it's not us putting the roadblocks there, it's our, our concerns are being looked at when it's given to us to look at. And then, none of our concerns are addressed.
And I totally understand that, that's why, when I heard, well, we, we're losing benefits for our people, I'm like, that's not true.
I know, and, and no one has ever said that any benefits are being lost. The only thing that was our main concern was the vacation, the, um, yearly vacation. So my girls are given their whole amount of vacation that they get, a whole year's worth. Some offices make them earn it each month. Well, our concerns, all of us, was if you do that, you never have enough vacation built up to take a vacation. Well, Jeannie took the whole lump sum out for the year.
Okay.
And we asked her to put that back in and she didn't, so if that's the benefit that someone was concerned that they were losing, that's the only thing that was taken out.
Well, and I don't think that our goal was to take anything out, at least it wasn't mine or personal.
But that's the only.
Those are the things that get ironed out through discussion, and I think what's happened is here is emails are going, being sent out. One-on-one conversations are being had, and then it's being misrepresented or it's misunderstood, so that it can't be ironed out like it's a terrible thing. At this point, I just wanna see us come to conclusion of whether we're gonna do it or we're not gonna do it, 'cause we spent way too much time on it.
Just for reference, what we paid for was twenty thousand dollars worth of, or her time to complete her portion of whatever, so. We didn't waste some money, she's done her job. Issue now, it's a task, is sorting out through what we want to accept. And if we don't like the job that she performed, then it'd be looked at as a waste, yes, but, I mean, but.
My take on a lot of cities, as you're elected, you as elected officials, your concerns are not being addressed in the handbook.
And it might be okay for Campbell County, because that's, that's what it was, was Campbell County's handbook. But when we talked to employers council, 'cause employers council lived over it, there's way too much in there. And that in itself can get the county in trouble. LGLP looked at our handbook, they said there was absolutely nothing wrong with the handbook that we had.
And again, I never wondered it the first place, but I think that we've passed somebody to do it. These things need to be worked out or ironed out apparently, or taken out of it, but you can't do it by sending an email here and an email back. We need to get it together and finish it.
And to be said that any county employee that receives a che- a, a check from the county has to sign it or else. You can't force my office to sign.
I'm not questioning.
I know, I'm just saying, my office, I am in charge of my deputies and my assistants. I am in charge of them, not the board of county commissioners, so to force them into signing that handbook, the new handbook, you can't do that.
So, I, I'm not saying.
That is a state statute.
Well, it's also, the county board or county commissioners does control the budget, that does control the county. So if we're going to spend money, twenty thousand dollars, whether we consider it a waste or not, it will ultimately be a waste of time if we don't adopt that book. Because we got nothing from it, we're going back to the old handbook. So we can dance around it all we want to, but it's still, it's still happening, so I just wanna resolve it, so we're not spending time worrying about it. Whether the employees want it or not, let's make it so it's about the, the county employees and the department heads. Give what we want out of it and be done with it, because right now, we're just going back and forth like a tennis match. I don't like this, well, I don't like this, I don't like this.
But I feel like some of the board is thinking, well, we're passing a, whether the department heads want it or not. And you have to, I mean, 'cause you're, you're so set.
Get unified, that's all.
And, and you guys are so set on that twenty thousand dollars, you have to take that out of the equation right now. You have to listen to what we're saying and listen, you know, if we all still want that old handbook, the majority of us, and regardless.
Then we accept that.
Okay, okay, I want you to remember that next week when we sit down in the meeting on the nineteenth.
But there's no reason that we can't take that new handbook, put the things that you guys want on it, and have a new handbook that's updated for the next however many years, is what I'm saying. It doesn't have to be a total wash of that money.
Let's just quit arguing about it, beating a damn dead horse. I mean, let's just go back to the old handbook, leave it alone. I've always said this the whole time, if you wasted your money, yes, on this new handbook, it is a liability in some areas. So let's just wash it under the bridge, forget about it, go back to the old handbook, and then the problem is solved. And then we give money to somebody else that is needing it. We, yes, we have wasted the twenty thousand. But that's watering the bridge, you guys waste money all the time. But, um, enough, I mean, you do. So let's get, get, start concentrating as a board on this county, as quit worrying about the handbook, quit worrying about who did what here. Let's, let's start getting unified as a board and quit chomping at everybody's neck and be a whole instead of a, a broken up board. And that's gonna, and that is gonna be my conversation next week too. I says, get rid of this stupid new handbook, go back to the old. I mean, we've had it verified by employers council, we had a meeting with them last week or so. We, um, have had it approved by LGLP, there's nothing the matter with it. So, and they think that other one is way too big, so that's my, that's my beef.
And again, I'm for whatever we're gonna do without wasting our time any further.
We've already wasted enough time. Make a decision and be done with it. Throw it under the, go throw it out somewhere and let it burn. That's it. I don't care.
Your uncle, Claire, Kara, you have any input?
Not today.
Okay.
But say, I probably won't have any input next week, I've done said my piece.
Okay.
So where are we at? Are we gonna just wash it?
We, we have to make that decision next week.
Next week, we decide, yeah.
Or do.
Make a motion right now.
Anything else?
No, I just think that if we're gonna have those conversations, we need to have them in a group form, because there are misconceptions out there. Like I said, I heard that we didn't get a raise, it was an even wash, that's not true either. Uh, we worked very hard, I think, to, and talked about giving the employees the benefit of a raise.
We got the raise, we got the raise last year. I mean, we haven't got a new raise yet, we're not gonna get a new raise.
I'm talking about the increase you guys got, you guys didn't get an increase in your insurance, 'cause we ate that cost.
Yes, yes, but I mean, that's all been done, settled in the budget hearings, we don't need to keep bringing all that crap up. Let's just move forward and concentrate on what the county is, instead of what, who's gonna do what to who.
We over that discussion today?
I doubt it, but I.
Well, for today.
We'll see next week.
Next week, or ne- in two weeks, it'll be another discussion. Well, that's it, we have nothing under new business, the jury isn't ordered at eleven ten.